No. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Yukon City Council Municipal Authority Meeting. It is April the 4th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. We are here in the council chambers, which is the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street, in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. Tonight's invocation will be by Pastor Ray Roten from Bethany Bethel, excuse me, Bethel Community Church, followed by our flag salute.
Thank you. Let's pray. God, we are so grateful for this city of ours. Thank you for those that would serve and give their time to seek wisdom, to make decisions, to make this place safe and also abundant. God, I pray that you give wisdom. We need the wisdom of Solomon. We need the wisdom of the prophets. And God, we need the mercy and grace of Jesus tonight as decisions are made, things are heard. God, I pray that you go before us and that you would be with us in your spirit. Jesus, we love you. We thank you for that day that you came and gave your life for us. We think about these events 2,000 years ago and this week us celebrating Holy Week. Thank you for that memorial and that remembrance. I pray you bless each member, each thing that's discussed. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Roten. Okay, roll call.
Selby?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
Gilliland?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
Okay, we don't have any presentations or proclamations. Do we have any visitors tonight?
I have no requests, Madam Mayor.
All right, then we will recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item 1A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of March 21st, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Now adjourn as YMA and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Item 1, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all city council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of March 21st, 2023; B, payment of material claims in the amount of $707,183.98; C, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Okay, time for a report of boards, commission, and city officials. Do you have anything, Ms. Crutchmore?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item 3, consider a motion to enter into an agreement with the State of Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the project maintenance, financing, and right-of-way agreement to construct a multimodal trail along the west side of Garth Brooks Boulevard in the amount of $864,000 with a city match of $217,609, which is a 20% match, for a total cost of $1,081,609 as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I have a few questions on some of the logistics, I think, and finances. So, one question is, are, do we anticipate needing to acquire any easements or right-of-ways? And if so, is it already included in the projected cost?
On this project, we do not believe we have to have any right-of-way because of the width of the interstate and the width on Garth Brooks that ODOT had purchased years ago.
Okay, very good. And then, if there's something that goes wrong in the construction process or has to be fixed, I didn't see in the contract where that spells out who's responsible for that.
This is just the start of the process. Basically, we're going to interview for an engineer to design the plans for the project. And then they'll work and negotiate a contract with the state. And then we'll start that design process. So at that time, we'll look for all of the buried things that may be an issue or...
Okay.
And this is going to be a long process. Just on the Carissa grant, we're going to be into the middle of May next year, just going through all the approval processes, the plan reviews, and the 30%, the 60%. So we're trying to jump, so it's going to be at least two years.
Well, and that brings me to my last question, is that are these cost projections? Or are we locking in these costs?
These were cost estimates with a little projection. The state would not let us do the projections like we want to. The timing of the project, of course, is probably two years before we even start construction on them. We're hoping we can get it quicker than that. But all the steps we have to go through kind of dictate what we have to do in the timelines. And it's the federal process, and there's so many projects that the state is dealing with, ODOT is dealing with now.
So the, there's going to be fees for all those processes?
Right now, we've tried to put everything in the grant plus our 20% match. Of course, you know, as time goes on, we're not for sure. But we're hoping we stay within that. We're going to try to keep it within that dollar amount.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So we're getting free $864,000?
The grant, yes. And then we have to match it for 20%. It has the state fee in there and it has some other fees, so...
Still a good deal. Okay, any other discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Okay, item 4, consider a motion to enter into an agreement with the State of Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the project maintenance, financing, and right-of-way agreement to construct a multimodal trail along the west side of Yukon Parkway in the amount of $608,000 with a city match of $154,967, which is a 20% match, for a total cost of $762,967 as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Mitch, can you tell where this starts and where it ends? Everybody will have an idea on that.
Well, where we're starting, and is where we're hoping to start, is John Nell's development, which is the commercial development. We're going to go from there, extend all the way north, past the intersection of Ranchwood or Highway 4 to the north side. That's what we're trying to do, of Ranchwood. And with that, we're crossing the railroad tracks as well as crossing Highway 4. So we're trying to give this, the students' ability to cross safer, which is much needed. Yes, very good. Thank you.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Item 5, discuss and possible action regarding co-signing for a loan for the Yukon BMX Raceway at Taylor Park and directing city staff to prepare any necessary document as required. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. How much was the loan that they were wanting? Was $100,000?
They had it listed in separate projects. Tonight, there is no resolution. It's just whether or not you want them to come forward on the...
With the loan amount.
Right. And that will be at the next meeting.
Okay, so I think what we were hoping for...
Say your name and address.
My name is Dreah Schaus, and my address is 7801 Southwest 104th Street. So what we were hoping for is to co-sign on a loan for $100,000 that we would repay as soon as possible, but at some point between two to five years, up to you guys and the bank. And I'm not really sure how that works.
But you have it divided into projects?
Yes.
What is the most necessary project?
The highest priority would be the asphalt project.
So tonight, we're just deciding whether we want to co-sign. We're not deciding on how much money we are going to co-sign for. Is that correct?
That's correct.
No. How much?
It doesn't say how much.
In your motion, someone will have to make the motion that it will have to be how much. And then the resolution will not be until the next meeting.
Okay, how much would the asphalt project cost?
The asphalt project would be $55,000.
Is, I presume the loan is necessary so you can stay liquid and operate and not have to use all of your funds tied up in the larger project?
Yes, and to get them done more expediently so that we can enjoy them and bring in larger crowds for the bigger races sooner. I mean, we only have a set number amount of large race weekends per year.
Right.
And most of them are in the first half of the season. So it might take us a full season or, you know, a season and a half to save the type of money it would cost to do some of these bigger projects. The asphalt is the highest priority because right now our turns are just solid dirt. And the man-hours and the money and the time that it takes to get those turns race-ready after a rain or, you know, any type of weather is, is just, it's massive. And so we're constantly kind of fighting that. So if we could get those asphalted as soon as possible, then we can really start to pick up a lot more momentum.
And we had other loans with them, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And they paid them back?
Yes, ma'am.
Reasonable time?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Just, I support the BMX deal. My question is, should city government be co-signers on loans? I mean, that's...
We do own the property.
I understand that. And I understand we have done it before.
Anybody else?
Is there any other businesses or organizations that we do something like this for?
No.
Is there any, I mean, we obviously partner with other groups like soccer and... I mean, we've built parking lots at Taylor Park. And I'm not sure all the details is before my time. But I think there's advantages to working with private groups to bring people to our city, definitely. So I'm not sure it's a disadvantage in any way. But that also puts us on the hook for a lot of money if something were to happen, so...
Right, the other parks, we've actually paid for ourselves, the improvements. And so what I hear you is saying is if we approve this, you guys will pay for it. When you leave or disband, we keep the improvements.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
It's city property.
Correct.
I would like to see us go at least the $55,000 to get the asphalt so they can come in rather than the full $100,000. Because would anybody rather do 100?
I mean, I think you can see from the information that I emailed you guys that we bring in several hundred thousand dollars to the city each year. So I don't, and we're not asking for any money. You know, we're just asking for the backing that we're good for. We've been in that park for 21 years. We're not going anywhere.
I do think that... I want to see how to articulate this. Well, let me ask this question instead of saying that. If you were able...
You're not going to offend me.
If you were able to do the asphalt, you know, immediately, essentially, is the organization liquid enough for the rest of it? My concern is that if we just do that, well, then we don't have... If we just do the asphalt, then we don't necessarily have the infrastructure. Because the idea would be bringing the bigger events because you have a little bit better track. But then if you don't have the concession stand and the walkways and the other things, then I'm not sure that that does what we hope it would do to just fund the asphalt.
It certainly prolongs the, you know, it certainly prolongs the process. Is it impossible? No, I will tell you that we are a very dedicated and determined group of people. And, you know, we will find a way. But ultimately, we would really like to be more involved with the city. My family personally travels all over the nation racing at national races. And I have seen so many cities just thriving because they have a BMX track in their city. You know, the city literally paying hundreds of thousands to a million dollars to get a BMX track in their city because they see the value that it can bring. And, you know, we're not just a pile of dirt in the back of Taylor Park. Right now, we're ranked number three in the region of 91 tracks and number six in the nation of almost 300. We're a big deal. And we bring a lot of value to the city. So, I mean, I would love to see the 100,000 happen. I feel like it would be disappointing not to see that from the city, like a lack of support and a lack of value for what I feel like we bring to the table.
So there's, if we approve this tonight, then going forward, we can discuss the structure of the loan? Or would that just be totally up to between them and the bank?
You said tonight we do how much it is. And the reason I threw $55,000 out there was because I felt like we were obviously in hesitancy for that large amount. And so I'd rather, I'd like to see us at least do 55.
I have a question. Is it, was it your goal to begin all these projects like immediately, as soon as the loan's approved?
Yes, as soon as possible. We'd like to spark these things.
The asphalt and the concessions and the walkways.
Yes, all of it. As, I mean, as soon as we can get, you know, reasonable contractors to come out and, you know, reliable, trustworthy people to do the work. We already have quite a few bids from several different companies. So we're kind of, we're kind of ready to pull triggers over there. And we're all very excited about it, to be honest. So we have a huge race at the end of May. And so we're very excited to see what we can get done. We just had a big race this past weekend. And we spent a lot of time getting prepared for that, and it was a huge success. So I think, I mean, this is so far in our history of being there. This is our best season yet. So we're really thinking that it's just going to continue that momentum and take off from there. But yeah, as soon as we could get the projects scheduled and slotted, and we will.
Well, I think it's beneficial to allow them to go ahead with the 100,000. I mean, we've never had a problem with them paying the note. So it would just expedite the projects and completion of it.
Well, my question on the structure, well, my question is, structure, could we, would it make, I mean, I agree with Donna, but I sense there's a little bit of unease about the amount. Would it ease the concern if we structured in such a way that says half the loan needs to be paid back within 12 months? But the, and the total note no longer than five years? Can we, do we have the leeway to structure terms in that manner?
A lot of those specific terms will be up to the financial institution where the loan is taken out, since you all are simply stepping in as a guarantor, as I understand the request.
Correct.
But you could pay off early.
Right. And you could request that, that they put those terms in there. But you don't have any control of whether the bank accepts that term.
Because I felt like I wasn't getting...
Yeah, because I don't know if we could, I mean, if we could even ask that once we say, yeah, we'll co-sign. But we could say we would co-sign for no more than a five-year note.
I can tell you that, obviously, this is nothing that we can, I can put in a contract. But, you know, none of us like to have debt. We don't like to owe anybody anything. So it will get paid off as soon as possible. It will get paid off as much money as we can every month. Most of the time, more than whatever the minimum payment would be. And then in addition to, every time we have a big race weekend, you know, we would be able to pay a larger chunk, you know, $15,000, $20,000, $30,000 from that weekend. So we don't anticipate it even taking remotely the five years. So, but I mean, we would be comfortable with that, with the half, you know, and then the rest paid out. Really, any type of, any type of structure. But like you said, I'm not sure what the bank would allow.
So are you thinking the whole 100,000?
Yeah, I think we, I think it's okay if we help them do it. I just, we've got to protect our taxpayers, too. So we need to come from that angle.
Okay, so do we need to change in here to say no more than 100,000? Or do we just keep it like it is?
You need to amend your motion.
Donna made the motion.
Amend the motion to where it would just state the amount.
Okay, well, I amend my motion to state the amount of $100,000.
So let me reread it to us. Discussion and possible action regarding co-signing for a loan for $100,000 for the Yukon BMX Raceway at Taylor Park and directing the city staff to prepare any necessary documents as required. Okay, let's vote.
We need a second on that.
Go. Second. Anyone?
Mr. Gilliland gave a second before.
Second.
Okay. All right, let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
No.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
No.
All right. Item 6, consideration, discussion, and possible action to enter into executive session to help confidential communications between the city council of the city of Yukon and its council concerning the settling of certain claims and pending litigation, City of Yukon versus Purdue Pharma LP, case number 19-op-45716-dap, pending in the U.S. District Court for the Northern District of Ohio in and city of Ada versus Walmart Incorporated, also known as Walmart Stores Incorporated, case number CJ-22-250, filed in the District Court of Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, including potential resolution of certain claims against Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, Teva Allegra, Allegrin, related to lawsuits against pharmaceutical supply chain participants of opioid prescription drugs, and taking appropriate action in open session, including possible authorization to settle claims, the disclosure of which may seriously impair litigation if known by public disclosure as allowed by 25 OS 307B4. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Item 6A, consider a motion to adjourn... Oh, sorry, we're going into that. I was getting us out of there quick. All right, if I could have Harrison Luhan, Doug, Tammy, and Roger come to the back. We'll be right back, folks. Okay, that machine. Six A, consider a motion to adjourn from executive session and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to read the minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed and no action was taken and no votes were cast. All right, sit back and relax for a minute because I got a lot of reading. Item 7, consider approving participation in the Walgreens settlement agreement dated December 9th, 2022, the retailer-state subdivision agreement as it pertains to the Walgreens settlement agreement, and the state-backstop agreement applicable to the Walgreens settlement agreement as recommended by Todd Court and Tony Pickett, McAvie and Taft, legal counsel for the city of Yukon, and other litigating Oklahoma subdivisions, including approval of the resolution number 2023-02 and authorizing the mayor of the city of Yukon to execute the subdivision participation form... and authorizing the mayor of the City of Yukon to execute the subdivision participation form for the City of Yukon's participation in the Walgreens Settlement Agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gillen?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item eight, consider approving participation in the Walmart Settlement Agreement, November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, the Retailer State Subdivision Agreement as it pertains to the Walmart Settlement Agreement and the State Backstop Agreement applicable to the Walmart Settlement Agreement as recommended by Tom Todd Court and Tony G. Pickett, McAfee and Taft, Legal Counsel for the City of Yukon and other litigating Oklahoma subdivisions, including approval of the Resolution Number twenty-twenty-three dash O-three and authorize the mayor of the City of Yukon to execute the subdivision participation form for the City of Yukon's participation in the Walmart Settlement Agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Item nine, consider approving participation in the CVS Settlement Agreement dated December ninth, twenty-twenty-two and the Retailer State Subdivision Agreement as it pertains to the CVS Settlement Agreement and the State Backstop Agreement applicable to the CVS Settlement Agreement as recommended by Todd Court and Tony G. Pickett, McAfee Taft, Legal Counsel for the City of Yukon and other litigating Oklahoma subdivisions, including approval of the Resolution Number twenty-twenty-three dash O-four and authorize the mayor of the City of Yukon to execute the subdivision participation form for the City of Yukon's participation in the CVS Settlement Agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item ten, consider approving participation in the Allegrin Settlement Agreement dated November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two and the Allegrin State Subdivision Agreement and the Allegrin State Backstop Agreement as recommended by Todd Court and Tony G. Pickett, McAfee Taft, Legal Counsel for the City of Yukon and other litigating Oklahoma subdivisions, including approval of the Resolution Number twenty-twenty-three dash O-five and authorize the mayor of the City of Yukon to execute the subdivision division participation form for the City of Yukon's participation in the Allegrin Settlement Agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Item eleven, consider approving participation in the Teva Settlement Agreement dated November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two and the Teva State Subdivision Agreement and the Teva State Backstop Agreement as recommended by Todd Court and Tony G. Pickett, McAfee and Taft, Legal Counsel for the City of Yukon and other litigating Oklahoma subdivisions, including approval of the Revolution Resolution Number twenty-twenty-three dash O-six and authorize the mayor of the City of Yukon to execute the subdivision participation form for the City of Yukon's participation in the Teva Settlement Agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Is there any new business tonight?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. It's time for council discussion. We'll start with Councilman uh Gillen.
I have nothing further tonight.
Councilman Zimmerman?
I have nothing tonight.
Councilman Wooten?
Send it on down.
Councilwoman Yonda?
Well, I was honored to be part of the ribbon cutting tonight at the Disc Golf Course. Uh, they've done an awesome job with the course and another great activity for the City of Yukon.
Yes. Okay, but a couple of dates, Yukon Senior Games, that starts um April fourteenth through April twenty-second. It is fifty years and older. Olympic-style events for these people in billiards, track and field, basketball, creative arts, golf and more. You can register online at yukonok.gov dot slash catalog. Festival of the Child is coming soon. That's May sixth, ten AM to four PM. Uh, you can get your tickets in advance at Children's New World, Childhood Learning Academy and all Y and B locations and any of our community centers. Um, yes, I would like to say a special thank you to the Yukon Support, Community Support Foundation for giving a grant to the City of Yukon to build the Welch Park Disc Golf. That is something that I've been working really hard to get. Um, I was so thrilled that they were willing to do that for the Parks Department. They were wonderful, the city working with all of that. We had some uh disc golfers out there tonight and they were already playing even in this wind. So I'm thrilled. Uh, make the most of your tomorrow and be kind to one another. This meeting is adjourned.